This conference will now be recorded.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt.
I had an opportunity last week to meet the National Chair of the County Commissioner's Association and they refer to her as President and I said, "I'm not sure whether to bow, curtsy, or salute." She said, "We'll do all three and I'll figure out which one I like." So anyway, we're glad to have you. Just to be reminded that as we go through our protocol procedures, that any thing that is communicated through text message or email during the board meeting regarding issues that are coming before this board will be considered public record. With that, I'll ask the Secretary to call a roll. Treasurer Falwell, here's Chavella Thomas.
Present.
Lorraine Johnson.
Present.
James Lumpston.
Present.
Linda Baron.
Present.
Bob Shea.
Present.
Nels Roslin.
President.
Stephen Bean.
Wynden Hibbler.
President.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Yes.
Good. Thank you all. We will, I want to say that most of you are familiar with the fact that Nels Roslin is now the Controller of the State of North Carolina. So we're going to keep him on this board for as long as we can. He's been a valuable member of our board and congratulations on his new responsibilities and duties. There's a lot of interaction between the Treasurer's Office, our Banking Division, and the Controller's Office. Next, I'd like to extend our warmest welcome to Captain Robert Shea Jr. He's the Speaker's Appointed to the North Carolina Supplemental Retirement Board of Trustees. He'll be replacing Michael Lewis. He has a strong connection with the North Carolina and all of its communities and brings extensive experience in finance and wealth management as well as has established an impact on operations and processes to every place that he's been. I look forward, and we look forward, to his contributions that he will bring to our rich, diversified, and active board. So congratulations, and if you'll join me, I'll administer the oath.
Sir.
Okay. I want everybody to know this is what Pilkpin, so I only got a fellow Spartan on the board. It's not Michigan. Our football team's undefeated.
That's true.
So Robert, you'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You, Robert Shea Jr., solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and inconsistent therewith and faithfully discharge the use of your office as a trustee of the Supplemental Retirement Board. So we have you got.
I will. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
On your toes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words? Or are we going to wait till our end?
We can do it again.
That'd be great. Thank you. Members, I have to, a couple of engagements that start at 11 o'clock and I may have to pass the gavel a time, but so we're going to go through our process as we always do. I would like, if I'm not here, to adjourn our meeting today in honor of Deputy Ed Byrd, just the latest North Carolinian law enforcement officer who's been killed in the line of duty. It's been a horrific month for public service workers, DOT workers, deputies who've been killed in the line of duty. A few miles from here is the last resting place of Coach Jim Valvano of North Carolina State. And somebody you may recall that on his headstone it says, "Every day you're supposed to laugh a little, cry a little, and think a little." And you had to cry last week, as I did, at Deputy Byrd's funeral when his canine companion Sasha, without instruction, jumped up on his casket during the service. And it was just the most, I've been unfortunately to a lot of these things. It's just the most unbelievable thing I've ever seen. And then circled the casket because obviously Sasha knew something was going very wrong. And so, you know, the grief process of people that I work with, this board that's sometimes unknown is unloved. Unless you know somebody and something tragic happens, you really don't make things. So I just wanted to make sure everybody saw a picture of Deputy Byrd today. We also lost Deputy Fishman from Wayne County, killed in the line of duty, and other public service workers. The reason I say that is these folks are and continue to be and have been our customers. We are normally in the check delivery business, which is a very positive thing, but unfortunately, sometimes being in the check delivery business is not a positive thing. So thank you for that. Our Ethics Act members, please take a moment to review the agenda. Does anybody have an actual potential or appearance of a conflict regarding the matters at their course? Hearing none. Occasionally, we have the evaluation of statement of economic interest that is required to be filed by our members. Our newest one is from Captain Shea. And in the appendix, you will find Captain Shea's SEI evaluation. And according to Ethics Act, any conflicts of interest that have been identified, this evaluation will be recorded in meeting minutes, and the evaluation will be officially a part of our record if anybody would like to view that in the future. Adopted of the resolution and appreciation for the service of Michael Lewis. And this is a resolution that's in your board book. And I just want to thank Michael, which I have done personally and through letter and now through this resolution that hopefully the board will adopt. Thanking him for his service to this board for a very long period of time. With that, without objection, as we go through the voting process, and I'd recommend this for Thomas also, that if somebody makes a motion or a second to a vote for efficiency purposes, we'll consider that to be a yes vote. So those two names don't have to be called. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution of appreciation for the service of Michael Lewis as a member of the Supplemental Retirement Board of Trustees.
Second.
No, second. No, it's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call a roll. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Chavella Thomas.
Aye.
James Lumpston.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
Nels, Nels Roslin.
President.
Steve Bean.
Wynden Hibbler.
Aye.
Thank you for that. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes. You used to stutter like I did. That's a tough sentence. Of May 26, 2022.
So move.
Chavella, second.
Second.
He furthered, he furthered discussion. Hearing none. The clerk will call a roll. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler.
Aye.
And likewise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 19.
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. Much the second being made. Any further discussions? Not the clerk will call a roll. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler.
Aye.
We now are going on to item seven. We're rolling right along the first 10 minutes here. And for administrative matters, I'll turn the media over to Jeff Hancock, Director of this plan, for a discussion about our audit update, our BNY Mellon custodial contract.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that all of the board members were up to date. They may have already read the minutes from the Audit Subcommittee, but the 2021 audit results from CLA, we received a clean opinion for that. There were no, there were no issues and there were no findings. So just wanted to make sure that the board, those who are not part of that Subcommittee, were aware of those results. Moving on to the next item. Here in the supplemental group, our BNY Mellon custodial contract has a different end date than our counterparts within the Investment Management Division. And so what we are seeking to do is get approval to do an 18-month contract extension so that we can align our contract end dates such that in the future, whether we have to go out to bid or renegotiate with BNY Mellon, that we can go as a larger group together. And here at SRP, we can take advantage of the size of our brethren in the I&amp;D group.
Do you need a motion? Any quick, yeah.
I move approval.
Second. Second, second, but again, second. Sorry. Thank you very much. He furthered discussion. Not the clerk will call a roll. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Chavella Thomas.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
As you can see, it's a very efficient board. So if you want to make a motion or second, it's like, it's like fat with you. You can't hit that button. So we're glad to have you. Now we'll go to Reed for our legal matter update.
It's time to issue an RFP for auditing services. Before we came 457, again, our current auditor is a three-year cycle. Last audit, last RFP was in 2019. Before that, we had an RFP in 2016. Clifton Larson Allen's been the auditor for, well, they were selected pursuant to both of those RFPs. Maybe the auditor going back even farther than that. But the board's vendor selection policy requires an evaluation committee to make a recommendation to the board, and then the board has the final approval of the auditor. It's staff-strat in an RFP. It's pending final internal approval. Covers the same services as in 2016, 2019. The only substantive changes are some of the general and IT terms and conditions, as well as the proposed term, which would be, of the RFP cycle, which would be five years with proposed two additional renewable years for a total of seven years. But it's important to keep in mind the board, as always, will continue to have the opportunity to go year to year. We actually, we actually do a new engagement letter every year, even though we've selected an auditor for a three-year, five-year cycle.
Reed, can I interrupt you? I got a text. Steve Bean, is everybody on? We're having an issue with the phone live.
This conference will now be recorded.
Nels Roslin. James Lumpston. Can you guys still hear us?
They're on, but muted.
They're on.
They're logged down.
Jim Lumpston, yes. Sorry, I had me on. Jim Lumpston is here. Sorry to that.
How about Nels Roslin?
Good.
There are four of them talking. I don't know who the four were. Allen. We'll just leave that. We'll let that by. Okay. You have a floor, Reed.
So we need two things from the board. First, the vendor selection committee requires one or two board members to serve on the evaluation committee. So let us know if you're interested. The valuation committee will review the proposals, see probably two or three times, and then make a recommendation to the board. There will be an opportunity to call in or be a team to see what's show up for two or three for all those meetings. If you need time to consider, staff can follow up. Next week, email. Unless someone's interested now.
I'm interested.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chavella Thomas and Wynden Hibbler.
And Lumpston would do it if somebody didn't want to.
Thank you. We also need, the policy required, the vendor selection policy requires that the initiation of this RFP process, that the board approve that. So we would need a motion to formally vote formally to begin the process.
Okay.
One other thing, on a related matter with Michael Lewis rolling off of the board, replaced by Bob Shea, we have an open spot on the Audit Subcommittee. It doesn't have to be filled. The board's charter requires three or four members on the board. We still have three, but if you are interested in serving on the Audit Subcommittee, please let staff know. Are there any questions before the motion? Are there any questions?
Do I hear a motion to, as advised by Reed, our legal counsel, to start the procurement process to choose an auditor?
So move.
Second. Bob's got a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call a roll. Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
James Lumpston.
Aye.
Linda Baron.
Aye.
Nels Roslin.
President.
Steve Bean.
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Reed. We'll now go to our administrative update and hear from Michael and Matt. You're welcome.
Sir, excuse me. We have one other, one other update on behalf of the proxy voting vendor.
Yes, you're correct.
Just briefly, Glass Lewis is the proxy voting vendor for the supplemental retirement plans, as well as for the pensions. And they vote proxies on our behalf pursuant to the board adopted policy, which is actually the same between the pensions and supplemental plans. Their current contract began in 2017, and they've been, and expires on September 14. We're working with them on a new contract. The fees are divided between SRP and the pensions based on usage. There's a $25,000 threshold for board approval. We don't expect that that will, will meet that. In the new contract, we do expect fees to go up because we had a flat fixed rate contract for the last five years. We paid about $8,000 in the 21, 22, 12-month term, just projecting about $8,700 this year. So we're well under the $25,000. However, this is just to make sure that you're aware of this particular contract, which is required under the vendor selection policy. There's a possibility that our volumes will go up because we may be voting the shares in our BlackRock Collective Investment Trust, which BlackRock now permits. We're working on that. However, even with that increased usage that we have a, even though our fee will go up in the years of the contract, it's fixed for a given year or so regardless of the number of votes that we have on these collective investment trusts that we do that. It won't affect our annual fee. Last item is the Department's Corporate Governance Committee is evaluating the proxy voting policy. Any changes that are recommended by the committee will come to the full board for approval. Are there any questions?
Let me just add that if you read the Wall Street Journal or watch the news, there's just a lot of buzz and people pining about proxy voting on behalf of any pension plan, public or private. I'd just like to remind you, as I had to remind myself, our only loyalty and duty is to the participants of the plan. And part of that, especially with BlackRock, since they seem to be taking the lead on some of these ESG kinds of issues that, like in the pension plan, they're managing some of those assets for two basis points. We're not, there's no way to do it any cheaper than two basis points. So we're working on a process where they can manage our money, but not act like they own these stocks. They don't own these stocks. Our participants own these stocks. So we're probably going to have a divorce of them. They'll continue to manage the money for the benefit of our participants, but then we'll use Glass Lewis to do our proxy voting and kind of separate those duties. I'm sorry to have to bring this up, but emails all the time about what I'm doing about this, what am I doing about that. And so this is what we're doing about it. We're trying to exercise common sense and talk like adults. Sometimes that's not always reported in the public eye. So that's what we're doing on this topic. So thank you, Reed. So now, Matt.
Good morning, everyone. As they're coming up, I just wanted to remind people, we got an email just this morning from CG person Bob. It's, it wasn't a good set of circumstances when in power changes, prudential change was taken over by Empower and the stock market fell 20%. People were kind of putting those things together, like, you know, we've chosen a new vendor and now I've lost 20% of my money. And that's not the case at all. So we are going to try to do a better job of talking about that. We had no voice in Empower buying prudential. That's a corporate transaction that we have nothing to do with. But just to continue to remind people that these 401 and 457 plans are some of the most efficient plans in the world and that these are self-directed plans. So any type of investment gains or losses that they've incurred are as a result of decisions they've made and not that we've made for them. So welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Treasurer, Mike McCann and Matt Herman.
I'm going to interrupt you. Do you find that anywhere else in the country with your clients?
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure we definitely hit on that. So we're not, we have not heard that feedback from any participants. Now that being said, with your comment at the last board meeting, we've worked with staff and then also made sure that in all of our one-on-one meetings and group meetings, that we're making it clear to the points that you just made, that with the sale transactions, no investments change the participants' direct fees, the work that the board does to provide the investments. So we've gone ahead and proactively reinforced that. But to your question, no one on our team has fielded a phone call or in a one-on-one where they've made a comment thinking that the market drop was because of the sale. So we're trying to be proactive in our outreach to just make sure that as part of our one-on-one, we're just sharing that information with them. Thank you. Yep. So for our update today, what I'd like to do is go over some of the meaningful statistics on the plan. And then we're about a little over the halfway mark in the 403B discontinuance project. So Matt's going to give an update on where the 403B discontinuance project sits. And that's what you have a great work with this team to do. So to start off with today, before we get into some of the key stats, as the Treasurer mentioned, on April 1st, prudential, the sale was official to Empower. So I just wanted to give a kind of brief update in terms of what's been going on behind the scenes over the last couple of months. So a great deal of planning and analysis is going on right now in terms of the project to eventually move the North Carolina plans off of the Heritage Prudential Record Keeping Platform onto the Empower Platform. That is expected to occur in the first quarter of 2024. So in the next couple of weeks, staff's going to receive an invitation that any board members are welcome to attend from Empower Leadership to give more insight into the next steps around the migration. And then there'll be a specific detailed project plan as we get closer to help make sure that from both an employer and then also participant perspective, how that process will work. So that's the latest update. I expect that I'll have more to share with the board at the next meeting in December, but that transition is expected to occur in first quarter of In terms of some of the key metrics, I'd like to start on page four today. So some of the key metrics that we just make sure that we look at every quarter. In terms of contributions versus distributions, pretty typical pattern here of what we see year over year. Of note, contributions did exceed distributions in June of this year. Now, since that board meeting in the like July executive summary that we produced, distributions outpaced contributions. So nothing, nothing to really read it as a trend line there. Just wanted to point that out. You can clearly see the market pullback in terms of average participant balance with the market volatility. But at the same time, the active average employee payroll continues to reach new highs. We're now over $245 for the average monthly employee payroll, which is a new record. Same thing on page five. Total unique participants with the balance, that is again, an all-time high. We're now over 302,000 participants in the plans. And then total enrollments, we had a meeting with staff yesterday to walk through where we are year-to-date with the enrollments. We're having a great year again in terms of enrollments. You know, don't want to put Matt and his team any pressure on them, but we play at an all-time high in terms of enrollment activity. And then loans, consistent with historical trend line in terms of loans. On page six, we look at our performance guarant goals that we have in the contract, average monthly contribution rate, active participation rate, and then goal maker usage. All of those continue to outweigh the performance guarantees in the contract. And then you can see the interactions year-to-date. We had nine new employers adopt the 457 plan, six adopt the Contribution Accelerator Program, and then eight employers have either added, changed, or enhanced their employer contribution program so far this year. And I'd next like to go to slide 11. Just a quick hit for the board. Like this shows specifically the 401K plan over the last 12 rolling months. And I just, you know, again, point out with the market pullback, right? So we've seen a 4% increase in members with the account balance in the 401K. But the average account balance with the market volatility has dropped 16%, where the average balance this time last year was just over $52,000, where now it's pulled back to 43. Now, if the trend line holds for what's happened in the first part of Q3, I would expect to see that average account balance go back up depending on how the rest of this quarter goes. But just an acknowledgement of participants are seeing that market volatility in their average account balance. But that being said, so far, we're not seeing participants do a lot of like panic selling. We don't see, we don't see a flight to stable value right now. We don't see people pulling out of the asset allocation to a goal maker. And we see people, you know, continuing to, with that average monthly deferral rate continuing to increase. So so far, I would say that your participant base, the vast majority are staying the course, but it's definitely something that we need to continue to monitor.
Mr. Treasurer.
Yes.
I think that's a compliment to our communications team. Looks like our participants have learned that when prices go down, it's time to buy on sale. So, thank you.
To communications.
And then lastly, I want to, before I turn it over to Matt, I also want to make sure I get on page 48 in terms of rollover history. So slide 48 is a, there's a lot going on on this slide. The key metric to share is that over the last quarter, we saved for all assets that could roll over or could roll out, cash out, we saved 96.38% of those assets. For the, over the last year, saved 84%. Again, for over the last year metric, that continues to be an all-time high going back to 2015 when we first built this table. So, you know, we're still seeing a lot of rollover outs. You can see firms where those rollovers are going to. But Melinda, to your point, I think that in terms of the focus from a targeted communication, the work that Matt's team does with participants in the field that are at retirement or in retirement, near retirement, you know, we're continuing to make headway to improve that metric. metric. When we first started tracking this, that number was like in the mid 70s. We're now, last, last, for the last rolling year, it's 84%. So continuing to make progress there, still a lot of work to do. But just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's a focus that we always talk about each quarter. So wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
Bob, we've just, we have become frustrated with the amount of marketing that's going on that somehow triggers something in people's minds that when they retire, they must take their money away from us. And so our new message is you never have to, the money can stay there forever. And if you can do it better, cheaper elsewhere, then go do it. And then we handed people a sort of a roadmap of what our fees were. So if you're meeting with a financial advisor who's giving you all these numbers, we actually said they had to put their numbers down here and then had to sign their name to it. Because a lot of people tell folks that there's no fee associated with what they're doing. So thanks to the team, our team, your team, because we think that part of retirement readiness is not making uneconomical decisions at a point in your life when anxiety is at an all-time high, when you're changing your life through retirement. So just forward. Thank you.
Any comment?
Yes.
But and on the flip side of that, on the, on the investment management side, on the, in the retail side, I know that we're required now, if anyone is going to be rolling over money to our firm for management, we have to fill out forms saying what the purpose is, several other things, and what are the fees for the plans they are in. And lay it out. Here are our fees. Here are, you know, here are the fees that you're paying now, wherever that may be. That's got a lot to do with the fiduciary and regulations, the stuff that's been coming through. I'm sure that there are a lot of other firms doing the same thing. I'm not sure exactly what the regulatory requirements are.
I wasn't aware of that, and that's a good piece of information that complements what we're doing.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll turn it over to Matt for, go ahead, Melinda, sorry.
Can we get copies of those forms? Sure. So we could pass them on to our participants? Okay.
Yeah, let me think about that. I can't do that. I think you can have it so that the board members can see.
You just jump in.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
And we can all just sort of look at it during the next board meeting and then hand it back to her.
Right. Yeah, I think the broker dealer would have a few notes to say about this.
But thank you. Now, Matt, your compliance department probably would think that.
No, no, they would not. The whole point of those forms is to keep me out of trouble. So I would assume I'd like to keep it that way.
Since this board compensates you so well.
Yeah, indeed, yes. Yes, I would hate to lose the income.
Matt, it's not a personal question, but in the event that your salary is based on your ability to add accounts, I would just want Empower to know that if we were ever able to get a 401K match for state employees, that would need to be baked into your contract somewhere because that would be a huge increase in the number of accounts. So just make sure you, I'll let you know ahead of time.
Our leader, Zorion, is here today, so yeah. Love that.
Okay. Which is something I've been designing for a long period of time. If you look at the participation between the state employees and the local employees in the pension plan, they're related to the participation in the DC plans. The locals outpaced state employees because me, the locals do provide a match. State does not. And I've been advocating for any amount of match. Then they might have to be a percentage, 50 bucks, just something to get the wheels going.
So anyway, yeah, Mr. Treasurer, just on that point, we met with staff yesterday and one of the ideas that we talked about was your idea around the state level match. And just to help the board kind of resonate on this, so the overall active participation rate in a sub-plan with no match is about 35, 38%. State level, it's 45%, no employer contribution, no match. If you work for an agency that has a match at the county level, the active participation rate is 78. Municipal level's over 78, too. If it's not a match, but just any type of employer contribution, at the county level, it's 63%. And at the municipal level, it's over 68%. So, you know, very meaningful indeed that that was ever able to happen for state employees as well.
Well, if facts matter on Jones Street, I think that's a fact that we'll be sharing with them.
Thank you for bringing that up. Now I'll turn it over to Matt Herman.
Good morning, follow-up. Thank you for your time this morning. I'll get into some of our new updates on page 5 here in a couple of minutes, but I did want to start on the 403B discontinuation effort. Huge initiative this year. It's a primary focus for us. So I want to roll through some of the progress points that Mike kind of hit on broadly earlier. Just to quickly recap, we started the year with 96 employers who were using the NC 403B program. So 96 employers, about 25 million in assets in total in that plan, and about 1,500 participants. And so that's where we started the year. Phase one of this effort, which really wrapped up just the last time we met, was to engage the employers to really focus on helping them complete their election forms. That election form was important because the decision they made really influences the options that are available to those 1,500 participants. What we found from those 96 were 72 of those employers continued to offer a 403B plan before, after this program went away. The other 24 elected to terminate. So 72, 24, it's kind of the disposition of the choices that were made. Really exciting thing for us is we had everyone complete that form by the deadline we set. And that was, I think, a pretty, a pretty big hurdle for us to get past. Because as you can imagine, employers are faced with a lot of things every day, just the day-to-day responsibilities that come with the school systems. They've been dealing with a tremendous amount of turnover within their staff and administrative offices. And they're also seeing a lot of teachers that are retired or left jobs and trying to fill jobs. So you add that to then the complexities of their 403B plans, the various products they offer, trying to make decisions on what's best for them moving forward. You know, some of them ran into challenges making those decisions. That was a big deal to get to the end of May. Luckily, 100% completed that form. So that's where we started. Partnership, and we made great progress. Phase two was about continuing to engage and then to start helping employees as they're going down the path of making decisions.
Is it accurate, especially for Bob, Captain, to say that all those 94 had the option of the 457 and the 401?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
At a point of level.
At a point of level.
Correct. And, you know, I'll admit it, I don't want anyone. I was going to share this later, but I'll share a message rather. One of the interesting things we've seen from these 403B discussions is we actually did have some employers that haven't been using the NC 457. Because of these discussions, it actually triggered some interest. And we actually saw a plan just set up actually, who added the 457 plan that was triggered by these discussions. So, you know, we are seeing that, but every employer has the ability to use those programs. So 72 keeping a program, 24 terminating the program. And the goal has been very, very heavily focused on engaging, educating, making sure we reach out as much as we can. Treasurer, follow-up, this is something you've mentioned a couple of times, and we've taken it to our multiple emails to employers, multiple letters to all 1,500 participants. We've done webinars for employers, we've done webinars for employees, we're doing proactive outbound calls. You just look at the employers, the 96, we've had well over 500 engagements since this project started in January. So a lot of interaction to make sure we're assisting the folks, answering questions they have, trying to support them any way we can. The exciting thing we've seen, to Mike's point earlier about the progress we've made, is we got 100% of those forms in, we're about halfway through moving the assets out of the 403B plan. And I'll throw out a couple of stats here. As of 8/19, you know, we started with 25 million, we're now down to 11 and a half million assets. So over half the assets have now left the program. We started the year with 1,500 participants, we are now down to 765 accounts. Over about half of the accounts have moved out of the program. So I think things are progressing nicely. When you look at those 96, 45 of those 96 plans now have a zero account balance. So essentially, they've been closed out. That leaves 51 plans still of the 96 that have assets remaining. So we're working closely with those employers. 17 of them chose termination. So come 9/30, those accounts will be at zero of those 17 employers. That leaves 34 left who actually chose option one. Those 34 that have assets are keeping their plans long-term, and they actually chose a default vendor. So whatever assets are left that the deconversion did, they said, Empower will work with staff, will work with those employers, as well as the vendor they chose, and possibly their TPA to liquidate those accounts and move them to the default vendor that sponsor chose. So still a lot of work to do. When you think about those types of transactions, those types of deconversions, you know, work with files, working with project teams on their end and our end. You know, we were looking at some of the data yesterday. You look at the month of September, like almost every single day, we have a deconversion that's targeted to be completed to get those 34 down to a zero account balance. Still a lot of work, but I think overall, really good progress we're seeing.
I spoke to somebody, Pritchett Investment, yesterday for an interview, and it seems to me that there's other states that are, they can't be great at something, which is the reason we dissolved the 403B. You just heard, there's $25 million sitting there, it's been there eight years, there's $14 billion in the other two plans. It just never took off. Could never be great at it, we could never get our fees down structured. So the products that are offered inside that plan are way more expensive for our participants than the 401 and the 457 products. So that's why this board made the courageous decision to do this, and I think other boards are actually looking at, you know, what we can be great at. So that's why we chose to do what we did. And we, I personally appreciate all the efforts, the timelines, the calendars, measuring four times, cutting once, not putting people in an IRS vortex of something that's supposed to be rolled, but it ended up being a distribution. All these things really upset people's lives. So I personally appreciate all the diligence that you've put into this. And I think it was the right decision for us to be focused on the things that we can be great at, that offer the lowest-cost product to our members. And Captain, when we had the 403B, everything we did in this bill, in this committee was tripled. So we'd have an audit of the 401, then an audit of the 457, then an audit of the 403B, an actuary report on the 401, 457, 403, and an investment update on the 401, 457, 43. So we're just going to focus on those two things that we can be great at. So thank you.
Absolutely. And to the point, thank you, Christian, it's our pleasure to assist and do everything we can to help with this effort. You know, we're seeing some employers that think the same way, right? They're seeing some of the benefits of unwinding this plan. And while they may not have chosen termination now, we've had several that have said, you know what, over the next few years, we may just go exclusive with the NC 401K 457 because it helps them be more efficient. So we're seeing that at a lot of different levels. A couple of other data points I'll share, you know, as we're engaging employees to the point you just followed earlier, we're trying to make sure we always help participants see the value of NC 401K 457. So when you think about an employee that's separated from service, they have a 403B account, but they may have left that employer, so they're in a terminated status. For employees that are in those 24 plans that chose termination, many of those employees actually have the option to move their 403B to the NC 401K or 457. So that's a message we deliver and we talk about with every interaction we have. The really exciting thing, there's still, we've seen 86% of those that are eligible to move over to this program are doing so, which I think is tremendous. It's almost 90%, and we still have a ways to go. But I think that trend is really exciting to see. You know, the others are going to kind of, I call hodgepodge of different carriers out there. We've seen movement to probably over 15, 20 different 403B vendors out there. But those that are eligible to move from the B to the K or 7, you know, almost 90% are choosing to stay, which is really exciting for us to see. Finally, we talked about plans that have added the 457 plan. One of the other interesting things we've seen is as we've engaged, it's actually led to some pretty fruitful discussions to actually do more education longer term. So we've seen education sessions be set up with school systems because of this 403B effort. In fact, we just had one last week, I was sharing with Jeff and his staff yesterday. You know, we did a session in one of the schools, four days, 50 participants per day for the custodial staff of one of the school systems. So some of these things had not happened before in these discussions. Focused on 403B actually triggered some other opportunities for the program, which, you know, we think our ultimate goal is that will help improve the trajectory. So still a lot of work to do, but thank you to staff for the support of this. A couple of other items I will share, if you jump to page 50, is our engagement. So in parallel with 403B discussions, we're still doing consultations, group meetings, education with both employees and employers. You can see a breakout at the top of page 50 for each of the months in the second quarter, so April, May, June. Bottom of the page, you'll see Q1 rolled up, Q2, and then year-to-date. I will point out, May of 2022, we saw a very large increase from April in all of the different activities we had. Group meetings were up 42%. Group meeting attendees were up 90%. One-on-one consultation, 22%. And why is that? We did a very large campaign in May, it was the first time we'd done it, called our Spring to Action campaign. So we listed a number of events from market volatility to general education. We did some sessions in Spanish. We do sessions on how to navigate the technology that's made available through this program and all the tools that are out there. That, that's very, very big increases in group meeting participants as well as consultation. So, you know, in discussing the results of that, that's something we're going to continue to try and find ways to do. How can we do some creative campaigns throughout the year to engage different audiences? Actually, this month, you'll see data on this at our next meeting, we actually did a first responders campaign. So we're doing special sessions for law enforcement, for fire, for other frontline employees, devoted to them, promoting them through local employers. I'm just trying to find different ways to help. So we're finding different ways to engage frontline first responders, K through 12 employees and other groups. And May was a big focus for us globally. When you look at the bottom of the page, you can see the year-to-date roll-up, again, every metric comparing to year-over-year, 20% higher in group meetings, 42% higher in attendees, 15% higher in individual meetings. And we also continue to go back onsite, right? We're being very mindful of where we go and what employers want us there. We've seen about 15% of our activity is happening onsite this year. That's slowly been increasing every month. But we also have seen a lot of employers have really embraced virtual. That custodial employee session I mentioned earlier, that was done virtually. The employees were onsite, we were virtual, and they liked that because historically, they had people driving all over to these meetings. Now they can be very efficient with their time. So we're trying to be flexible to offer over the desk, over the phone, over the web, based on the needs of employees. We're seeing good results there. Finally, Mike hit on some of the enrollment numbers. You can see those broken out, a rolling four-quarter on page 51. Year-to-date, we've had 12,324 enrollments in the program overall. And when we look at the data, historically, it was the highest Q1 ever and the highest Q2 ever. So we're really continuing the last year trend. We had the best year ever, seeing a lot of people taking action, which is really exciting to see, especially in light of some of the conditions, not deter people.
I'd like to comment for a minute.
Yes.
And when I was reading through everything, which as you know is kind of a wad. I hit those pages and was just blown away. I mean, I made, I was making meeting notes, prep notes, and I just wrote it all over the place with stars. I just can't believe you pulled that off.
Well, thank you for your.
I don't know how you've done it. I really have no idea how you've done it.
If you look at some of the messaging that's been done online, working with Christine Zora, the communications that were mentioned earlier, you know, it's a team effort and folks need us. We're seeing people taking action. But, you know, we have 450,000 people out there who are eligible, so we're continuing to just be creative, find innovative ways to engage. And, you know, if anyone would ever want to join one of our meetings too, we're doing virtual global group meetings a lot of the times. And, you know, there's an example of Christine Zora working with us to post those meetings online now on the website. So folks can go there and register, and we see good results from that. So thank you.
You mentioned cafeteria, I mean, custodials, folks you've met with, just met with all the cafeteria workers of Forsyth County. The importance of these individuals and making schools run ain't be overstated. Don't put you on the spot here. If we came up with a 401K match that was bifurcated based on how much somebody made, to actually put a little more juice for the lower-income people who have, need to be more retirement-ready, somebody who makes $150,000 a year. to actually put a little more juice for the lower income people who have, need to be more retirement ready, somebody who makes a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Is that possible?
Yeah, we can, we can absolutely do that. Just to make sure with Reed, that would, I think, require your plan documents to be updated, but we could absolutely administratively get that for you. Ask you first and I
No, I'm just, I'm just in my heart, that's, if we ever do this, this is the way I'd really like to go. I'd like to, I'd like to have a higher amount of money going into the custodial workers and cafeteria workers match based on their income versus the principles. I think it's principles, but I just, if you, if you look at the CPI of the things you actually have to purchase in order to live your life, it's disproportionately more expensive for lower income people. And I would like our retirement readiness and whatever we're doing along these lines to reflect that.
Very easy for us to administer a feature like that. Now you're one thousand plus subplans if you put a feature in like that. For them to administer it the right way to then send us the right dollar amounts, they might have a little bit more challenges from just making sure they understood the rules. That needs to be, they need to make sure we thought it was part of the communication effort.
Because I was, I was thinking about what you said and I was thinking, there's more people at that level than at the other higher level, right? So you have, when you think about that percentage, that percentage that you would actually give at the higher level because you need spreading more than around the lower level.
That's how I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And, and even if it, because we are talking percentages, which would be a little tougher to administer, I don't take it too much time here. But if there was just a flat amount to get people going, absolutely, you know, if you make less than forty thousand dollars a year, you get two hundred bucks a year. If you make more than forty, you get a hundred dollars a year. So wouldn't it be a percentage thing?
Absolutely.
Just to get the thing going.
Just, just one more comment. Rob made a great point. We have an actuarial team, Mr. Treasure, that, you know, with a lot of our plans, they think about doing bottling around changing matches or adding matches or changing contributions of what that potential impact might be. You know, definitely partner on that to help maybe run models in terms of, you know, what the funding may be or something like that. Just as an offer, that would be helpful.
First, I need to give a thumbs up on the corner offices and the operations chairs that this is the rabbit. They want me to run. And even if I'm going to run the rabbit and they may not want to have anything to do with it, but
Flip side, one of the things that would need to be addressed is, let's say somebody is getting raised or they're currently at thirty nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Right.
The match doubles at forty thousand.
Right.
If that be taken into
Halfs.
Account, you know, what do you do? You know, if somebody's up for a raise and all of a sudden if it's a hundred dollars more, it costs, it's somebody involved in the decision that's like, oh, well, you know, if we keep them at thirty nine nine, we don't have to pay them extra contributions.
So when they go above forty, it would be in half, not double.
Excuse me, half. Yeah, that'd be great. But, but completely not what we were talking about. Yeah, I'm sorry. But still, for that to be taken into account, how to prevent somebody from being purposely held right below.
That's why you wouldn't want to have too many of these ladders.
Right.
Too many runs on the ladder. You'd have maybe two or three runs on the ladder. So.
Thank you for the question. You know, from an administrative perspective, yes. And from an education perspective, I think there's a lot.
Okay.
Sorry for having to assist with that. So thank you. Opened up any questions or other comments?
Any questions? Any questions from the phone?
Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Now we're to item ten, Gallier's. Treasure and Ford, a while since I've been here, it's been two years. You know, nice to put a face to a voice on the phone. Really nice to be here in your presence. Real quick, you know, we'll, we'll start off on sort of page one of our presentation here. And just give you a couple of brief items that were updated from the last quarter, last quarter's report. Mainly April first, which was part of the second quarter, SEI trustee replaced Wells Fargo for the trustee for the collective trust. And the only effect that it had on the North Carolina portfolio, stable value portfolio was the cash liquidity buffer, which is a bingo fund. All the rest of the investments underlying the stable value fund are separate accounts. So that was the only item there. One other thing that, that's not listed here, but will be coming up in future, future messaging. On October first, we had announced to staff on August fifth that Mike Norman, as you know, who's been here a few times before, he is, will become sole president of Gallier. Right now, there's, it's a structure of two co-presidents, Andrew Owen and Mike Norman. And as of October first, Mike will become the sole president and Andrew will be moving to the head of our fund governance of, for the department here at Allspring. So we are all very excited for this change for, for both. And, you know, we thank, we thank Mike and Andrew for his contributions. But, you know, now, now with, you know, what's happening now is we're having more direct lines of direct lines reporting into our parent company. So what, you know, another example of what's happening too, that was mentioned in our August fifth message, is that is like our chief operating officer, Chad Foot, the way he will be leaving the, leaving the firm on October first. But because of these direct lines reporting, so traditionally what would, would happen is our operations group would report into the COO and then the COO would, would speak with Allspring. Now that we're having a lot more synergies and direct lines of reporting, you know, the, our operations team are, are directly reporting into their counterparts at Allspring. So that role of COO is no longer needed. So those are, those are two highlights that aren't listed here, but, you know, will be happening in the fourth quarter of this year. If we flip ahead to, to the next page, we see that, you know, who we are. Basically, upper left-hand part of the page, ninety three point nine billion in assets over the quarter. It was about ninety one point seven billion last quarter. This was mostly due to asset growth in that stable value. We saw stable value assets move from seventy four point seven billion to seventy seven billion. This was mainly due to participant allocating, reallocating. We look at what makes up that ninety three point nine billion, seventy seven, as I mentioned, in stable value assets, which represents about eighty two percent of our bulk business. Eighty percent is our standalone fixed income, high quality fixed income mandates, particularly in the short and intermediate mandates. You know, other highlights on this page, you know, same number of separate accounts, stable value separate accounts, roughly a hundred employees on staff, which is the number we have been at, you know, over the last few years. Middle column, two hundred and five institutional clients, eighty nine percent of them have been with us for five years, including North Carolina. Sixty four worked with Gallier for fifteen years. State of North Carolina has been with Gallier since December first, twenty ten, which is about eleven and a half years. So we thank you for your continued faith in Gallier. And in the right-hand column, we've got one of the largest managers of stable value assets, as I mentioned before. Stable value is the lion's share of what we do and that's what we hang our hat on. And, you know, the strategy and investment teams, portfolio management all have over twenty years of experience. Any questions on kind of an update here? Okay. Moving to page three and section two, kind of gives you a snapshot of, you know, what, what portfolio looked like as of three thirty one and six thirty. You know, and again, you know, we've seen the assets rise, you know, they're about two point four six billion now. That increased about forty seven million since last quarter. You look at what made that forty seven million increase in assets, thirty six, thirty seven million came from net inflows, which is about one point five percent. And ten point three million, the remaining came from my interest earnings. You know, if we look at the lower left-hand corner, the portfolio characteristics, that's March thirty first and June thirtieth. Again, not many statistics have changed, you know, the average quality book value of the wrappers still at A plus. The average quality of the underlying holdings are still at double A. The contract issues are still at five. The next couple of numbers here, blended yield, yield of maturity, they have, they have increased over the last quarter. So, you know, one thing we've noticed, and I'll get to this when we show the historical kind of movement of the credit rates, is that one thing we noticed, the net crediting rate, you know, one six five on three thirty one had been right around that same number for the last three quarters. The underlying mills, however, have increased, you know, from last quarter, two seven six to three six eight. And that three six eight, if you look at it compared to other comparable investments, let's say T bills, ninety one day T bills or three-year cost of maturity treasury. You know, we see that those numbers, that's a June thirty from the Fed, were one seven two for T bills, two nine nine for three-year cost of maturity treasury. So again, you know, we are providing, you know, a significant higher yield than those comparable instruments. And again, really what, what drove the higher yields over the, over the quarter and year-to-date has been that increasing rates. Duration still around three point three years. And, you know, the, the big number that, you know, that I spoke with, you know, quite a bit in the last couple of meetings, but is that market book ratio. And again, while we have seen market, market yields rise over the, over the first half of the year, you know, that as interest rates go up, bond values go down. So that's what we see when we look at the market value performance, we see that, you know, we see a deficit there. In the, you know, in the short term, this should not be a cause for concern with that lower market book ratio. Because in fact, we expect rising rates will ultimately benefit stable value investors because as, as, you know, the, these rates get higher, participants are able to invest at higher yields, you know, and that should provide greater earnings potential for stable value investors. And one of the benefits of stable value is that rather than recognizing the mark, market losses immediately, stable value fund, investment contracts or the wraps, you know, allow those, those negative returns to be amortized over the, over the life of the stable value fund. So again, you know, because the contract's smooth, you know, the return profile of the underlying bonds, the yield or the crediting rate earned by stable value investors really does generally track, you know, current market rates, albeit with the lag. So as a result, rising, rising rate environment, the stable value investors gain the benefit of reinvesting at higher rate while being protected from that immediate mark, market losses. So looking at historical data, see that, you know, stable value crediting rates have tracked changes in, in the market rates on a lag basis. We expect that to hold true going forward. You know, in fact, you know, we, we expect market book ratios to drop under a hundred percent in a rising rate cycle. So, you know, they aren't new to stable value, these rising rate environments, stable value asset classes has a track record spanning over thirty years. And, you know, we've been able to deal with these, with these concerns and able to, you know, bring these, you know, five participants to positive return that they're, they're expected to see in stable value. Any questions on the market book?
Melina, I have a question. Are y'all doing some long-term planning on where you think the interest rates may settle in over the next decade?
You know, we try not to time interest rates, Gallier is, you know, pretty much interest rate agnostic. We, you know, we see, you know, what the Fed has done, a very aggressive raising rates. We also know that, you know, that that's a, it's a, it's a tight balance on how, how the Fed deals with inflation or is it going to derail the economy by raising rates too fast? So long-term, you know, we don't have a number that we're looking for. We manage the portfolio more or less duration neutral and interest rate neutral. So we, we don't have a specific number to, to, to give you.
Well, if I was guessing, if interest rates gradually go up and settle into what some of us old folks remember was a fairly constant rate around the six percent area, that would probably encourage our participants to move money into the stable value fund, which would directly affect all of our passive equity side. And I was just wondering if y'all were doing any long-term forecasting that we might keep in back of our minds?
Yeah, you know, there's no number that, you know, that we feel could be comfortable because again, you know, if the Fed, if the Fed keeps raising rates, will they derail the economy? Will they stop raising and in fact, coverings? And so, you know, that, that could happen at the same time. So, you know, the, the comments earlier about, about participants, you know, just not flocking to stable value, but staying the course long term. I think that that's what we've seen over our bulk of business. You know, back in the great financial crisis of oh eight, oh nine, there was a lot of flocking to stable value. We did see that in March twenty twenty, but you know, as we're going through, you know, these, these kind of headwinds of the recession speed, we haven't seen participants really flock to stable value yet.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question.
Sure.
When we were in sub-zero interest rate environment, did Gallier forgive any administrative fees to our participants? Take a bath on fees? Didn't increase the administrative fee? Can you just give us a short?
The administrative fee like that the state of North Carolina adds to the portfolio?
No, just, I guess what I'm asking is I've got a time deposit that just matured. It was at three tenths of one percent. Now they're offering me two point two percent. That's how much interest rates have gone up on short-term paper. And so while y'all were trying to kind of manage this thing in a sub-zero interest rate environment, were you suppressing the management fees inside of your wrapped profit?
No.
Okay. So there'll be no catch-up? Is interest
No.
But you won't be trying to catch up on that?
You know, the one, you know, in those sub-interest, you know, the low interest rate environment, we did see the market book was well over a hundred at that time. So it was amortizing a gain to the, the crediting rate. So now that we're on that flip side, we're amortizing the loss. So, you know, one thing that's interesting with interest rate cycles too, is we see that, that crediting rate, you know, it had been coming down as, as interest rates were, were going up, it's kind of flat. And now that, you know, we're at higher yields now, market book is lowered. But even though we're at higher yields now, we're investing at higher rates and it's actually having an impact, as you can see, the crediting rate. And the crediting rate is, is more or less the yield participants earn, you know, on a long-term basis for, for their performance. Because they, they get book value performance instead of market value.
Thank you.
If we turn page four, we see the actual performance, the net of fee performance for the participants. And again, you know, we have seen a little bit of lag in the three-month and year-to-date periods. And again, that's because as interest rates rise, bond values fall. And then, you know, the, the participant earns, you know, the interest rate on a lag, you know, that I had mentioned before. So again, when interest rates rise quite quickly, you know, the, the other two, then, you know, the benchmarks, the three-year cost of maturity and the three-month T-bill plus one fifty, those react to interest rates immediately. Whereas the, the stable value fund again is smoothing those returns over time. So it's doing exactly what we expect for the three-month period. But thankfully, the longer-term three-year, three, five, and ten-year inception numbers have all provided, provided excess returns, which we would expect. So now as we get to whatever the magic number is that the Fed wants to get to, if it does put enough pressure on the market that they need to pause or even cut rates, you know, we would expect that to turn around. So if we look page five, we see this is the historical cash flows. You know, you always, you always see that, that one big blip on March twenty twenty, which, you know, was comparable to a lot of our stable value separate accounts. But, you know, one thing we have seen for particularly from the second quarter, you know, there was positive net inflows into the stable value fund. As you can see, you know, since twenty twenty, nothing is really jumping off the page here. And again, we haven't seen, you know, that, that flight to stable value as we did in March twenty twenty. So really nothing on this page that really jumps out or that is different from our other stable value separate accounts. Again, the net inflows about one point five percent for quarter, two point two five percent inflows for, you know, year-to-date year. Page six is what I was referring to before, the historical statistics for the last nine quarters. And again, what we see Uh, and again, what we see on the upper left-hand corner, uh, the historical blended yield or the crediting rate. And, you know, that again, we would expect this number to drift lower, flatten, start to rise as we move through the interest rate cycle. That's kind of what we're seeing there. Uh, and again, we are at the stage where I think we're about moving a little bit higher than the flattening stage, which again, we saw in the third, fourth, and first quarters. Uh, but keep in mind, we also have to take into consideration this amortization of market value losses within the under, underlying fixed income portfolio. So it could dip, but again, this would be offset by, by some extent to reinvesting at the higher yields. Uh, but you know, as of June thirtieth, we're up about one point seven five percent for the crediting rate. Uh, lower left-hand corner of page, historical duration, right about three, three and a quarter years. Uh, again, stripped it up due to increases in interest rate, uh, interest rates causing prepayment for mortgage-backed securities to decline. So that's why we have seen that, that slight raise. It's basically nothing that we're doing. Uh, but, you know, in terms of how we invest in stable value, it's the underlying benchmark with the, with the mortgage, uh, mortgage-backed securities, um, more or less extended instead of contracting because of interest rates, because participants are, you know, people have mortgages, they're not going out to refi at higher rates sometimes. So, uh, the upper right-hand, uh, part of the page, this is the market book. And again, you know, you see it, it is dipping to ninety five point, uh, one zero. Uh, but again, this is not a, a cause of concern for us because it's doing exactly what we expected to do in a rising rate environment. And again, this corresponds directly to the underlying yield to maturity. So again, the three six eight number is, is pretty high number that we haven't seen in stable value for quite some time until, you know, back when interest rates were normalized in that five to six percent range. So, you know, there is advantages for, you know, the, the rising of interest rates, even though there's that immediate kind of offset because as interest rates rise, bond prices fall. But any questions on any of the statistics, historical statistics? Okay. Uh, turning page seven really briefly here, these are the wrap providers in, uh, in the stable value fund for North Carolina. Uh, and again, no real changes here in terms of the percent of the portfolio that they're wrapping. Uh, their, their financial strength ratings are all A-plus or higher, which again are two notches higher than their lowest minimum allowable. And fees, as we see, you know, haven't changed, um, you know, and are still, you know, the, the lowest that we've seen, especially for, you know, you know, you look at that insurance company separate account that Metropole would like. Um, but you know, that, that, as I mentioned previously and board meetings before, that includes the trustee custody fees. And if we took those out, they would be comparable fees to what we see in the yield of wrappers. So no, no, no concerns here with any of the fees or financial strength ratings or allocations. So, uh, if we can turn page, turn to page eleven. Just talk about fees. Fees, uh, you know, the highlighted fees here as of June thirtieth, another good message to share. Uh, you know, we have seen, year-to-date, we've seen fees drop about two basis points from about twenty-nine point three basis points to twenty-seven point three basis points as of June thirtieth, which represents a decrease of about six point eight percent. Uh, and if we omit the, the overlay North Carolina administrative fee, which went from two point seven basis points to one point four basis points, uh, you know, we see that's about a drop in fees about two point six percent, seven tenths of a basis point. And again, the main source of this reduction of fees over that year-to-date period was the decrease that Galliard management, uh, of the Galliard management fee on January first. And because North Carolina is a most favorite nation client. So when we do have new fee schedules come out, uh, for a particular client, we automatically look at the MFM's and make sure that they are at the lowest fee possible for their assets. So we're constantly looking at that. You know, the new fee schedules, you know, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at, I think it was September thirty-first numbers. It'll save participants roughly a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen thousand annually. Uh, if we look at quarter to quarter, E-drop, it dropped about, you know, two tenths of a basis point. So first quarter was twenty-seven and a half basis points, now it's at twenty-seven point three. If we remove that, that administrative fee of one point four basis points, uh, total fees would be under twenty-six basis points at twenty-five nine, which is pretty competitive fee schedule there. Uh, any questions on fees? Okay. Uh, if we turn to page thirteen, kind of get a, a rolled up view of what the portfolio looked like, uh, as of, as of six thirty. Yep. And, you know, what we see here, external manager allocation has remained at that fifty percent mark. Galliard manages about forty-seven point seven percent. High level message here is that the bond is positioned a little bit more conservatively. But, you know, Galliard and the other actively managed fixed income providers are, are looking for relative value in spread sectors. You know, we have found more opportunities in the corporate sector, but, you know, at a slower pace than previous months. Uh, you know, one thing that I'd like to note though is that we remain, we remain invested in the whole fixed income market, given that, you know, we show a small liquidity buffer. So, you know, we are invested. We are, we are being very conservative with, with the investments that we are making, given that, you know, this vehicle is a capital preservation vehicle. We want to make sure that, you know, the, any risks that we are taking are made, you know, in a conservative manner. So with that said, if we turn to page fourteen, we see the market value performance of the underlying pieces of the stable value fund. And, you know, one thing that, that we do see are, you know, the, the negative returns. Uh, and again, that, that's happened across the whole fixed income sectors. And, you know, major fixed income spread sectors underperformed like duration treasuries for the quarter and year. Uh, high-yield corporates, uh, obviously the most risky, uh, of the fixed income sectors had the weakest performance, followed by investment grade corporates. Uh, you know, longer, much, the duration funds fare worse than short-duration funds. Uh, you know, really in this first half of the year, as you'll see, uh, you know, with the, we're talking about equities or even fixed income, you know, there, there was a lot of headwinds in the first half of the year. And again, you know, this is, this is what we, the stable value fund is, is reacting just like we should. It is providing a positive return and will be amortizing, you know, any of these losses in the, in the portfolio going forward. However, it's always, it's all buffered by that reinvestment in higher rates. Uh, you know, one thing we've seen, corporate spreads have moved meaningfully wider across maturities over the quarter. Uh, and they've actually got back to, uh, you know, uh, spread widening that we saw during the pandemic, pandemic recovery of mid-two thousand twenty. You know, we've seen, you know, agency mortgage-backed securities struggle through another difficult quarter because of that hawkish Fed stance, which means, you know, that they are, they're raising rates, raising rates and, you know, and doing battle against inflation that we haven't seen in forty years. Uh, so, you know, one thing that's interesting about, uh, mortgage-backed securities is that, you know, the Freddie Mac weekly survey rate ended in June, had a roughly five point seven percent average rate for mortgages. That's the highest mortgage rate seen since the fall of, uh, two thousand eight. Uh, you know, all things considered, short-duration, high-quality nature of asset-backed securities though, have provided some shelter for, from the, uh, from the storm of performance that we've seen and has held better than other sectors relatively speaking. So really being more conservative in the first half of the year has benefited and also being shorter than that. And duration benchmark has been beneficial as well, speaking relative, relatively. Uh, and if we look at the performance specifically for the North Carolina stable value fund, you know, we see relative market value performance for the second quarter was generally mixed. You know, a handful of basis points up, handful of basis points down. Uh, however, we do see, you know, that outperformance, uh, the value added over the three, five, and since inception columns. Uh, you know, over the quarter, if you're looking at specifically the Galliard portfolio, uh, you know, those, those are basically flat to their respective benchmarks, but again, handful of basis points. Uh, you know, the, you know, the really, really the cause for the underperformance was the overweighting to the corporate sector, which was generally a negative as risk sold off. Uh, high-quality bias though within corporates was beneficial. And as I mentioned, being shorter than the benchmark, uh, was, was additive to performance. So being overweight, commercial mortgage-backed securities or mortgage-backed securities along with asset-backed securities was a negative as, as we did see a flight to safety. Uh, you know, all, regardless that we see negative returns here, we, we don't have any issues with any of the fixed income managers. And we have had some, some conversations about Genesee, uh, in the past and, you know, that they are performing better relatively, uh, you know, now. And again, we, you did add, as requested by the board last quarter, to add the net of fee performance, uh, for the underlying managers as well. Uh, one thing to note too, uh, is that Galliard, for Galliard, we don't, the gross net of fee performance is the same because we don't charge a fee for the underlying fixed income, uh, management. We do have a fee for the overlying, you know, overarching umbrella fee for managing the stable value fund. However, that's, we don't double dip is what, you know, for, for charging a separate fee on the investment management, the fixed income fund. So, uh, you know, that, that is probably the comments I have, I mean, you know, the, the comments I have for fifteen as well, you know, basically the same, you know, being, you know, being a little bit more aggressive in, in spread sectors and, you know, was a negative for performance, you know, and being, uh, longer than the benchmark also. But then again, you know, these, these investments that Galliard and the external managers invest in are of the highest quality. And as you saw with the weighted average, uh, underlying quality of the market value, uh, bonds at double A. So again, we're not, we're not, we, Galliard and the external managers aren't taking any excessive risk. Uh, however, you know, there is, uh, if you weren't in treasuries, the first half of the year, you know, you did have some, some relative other performance.
Excuse me.
Any other questions? Any questions? Any questions from the phone? Thank you, uh, for this, I guess.
I'm glad to be back.
Thank you for having me. Safe travels, Paul. Where are you headed from here?
I am heading back to Chicago, well, actually to Charlotte first and then to, uh, hopefully that flight doesn't get disappeared on me. We have to take the rental car all the way up to Charlotte, but.
Pension, the pension plan's on one percent of the Sears Tower, so make sure you go in there and buy something.
Buy some snacks.
Shocking. They got a place there called Chicken and Donuts. Kind of breakfast sandwiches, six dollars. Coffee's about, it's really good. I can't believe those prices in Chicago. But, uh, it's a, it's a new terrace park we just built on the.
Yeah, they gotta pay for all those renovations they did, so.
We paid for it, five hundred million dollars. One percent of five hundred. It's a great building and, uh, they now have a fourth, any of you go up there to visit, this building now has a fourth floor terrace. Honeybees and lounge chairs and grass. And you can just look out. It's free. We want you to pay to go to the observation tower.
We can stand outside the building, you know, in that little glass cage. And you can see, yeah, I haven't been up there. I've seen other people doing it, but great place to relax and spend your money. So thank you.
All right. Now we're with Elizabeth and Weston, and I'll have to leave during your presentation, but you're welcome. And thank you for coming.
We won't take it personally. Situated, we're going to go ahead and start with the quarterly performance section, I think we'll be a few pages ahead. Uh, but we have two agenda items today. Uh, we will go through quarterly performance as we usually do. We'll start with capital market observations to set the stage for, uh, the performance of your passive and active managers. And then we also have a stable value review. So if you hear from Galliard each quarter, once a year, Callan comes in and independently evaluates from a broader perspective and reports back to the board on Galliard as an organization, the process of performance. So we'll cover both of those today. And we'll start with quarterly performance. This is perfect right here. Um, start with performance. There's been a lot of reference to capital market environment. So I think everybody's aware that it was not going to be an absolute basis. Uh, the year continues to have negative performance, really leaving no one behind. Saw rate increases, continued increases in inflation, continued concerns over the situation in Ukraine. So it's been weighing heavily on both equity and extent of markets, and that continues. Starting with U.S. equity here, um, you'll see, again, I mentioned the negative performance for the quarter, which is now extended into the one-year return. So it was one-year period, you'd say, but also that one-year negative returns. So for the quarter, the broad U.S. equity market was down almost seventeen percent. We did see some reversals continuing to think back February, when we were talking about twenty-one-year returns. We, quarter after quarter, we've been talking about how growth was doing really, really well. Growth had been outperforming value, large cap, small cap. We've been seeing that reverse this year. So stronger performance from value, some struggles within growth. One trend that has not reversed is the concentration within large cap. And I mentioned that because it impacted some of your managers that Weston's going to talk about. So the large cap index is really concentrated by five, but especially by two. Um, so managers owning Apple, not owning Apple, being over underweight, had a really meaningful impact on their performance. So again, growth and value trends reversing, but it's still a lot of concentration within markets. Um, a little bit of a silver lining, I did check quarter to date, uh, through Tuesday. Large caps are up ten percent, small cap up twelve percent. So year-to-date markets are still negative, but we have seen, uh, a little bit of, of recovery for, for to date and still early in the quarter. Don't want to jinx it, but we'll refer on that next time. Uh, on the next page, international similar story, negative returns magnitude a little bit less than that here in the U.S. Uh, so broadly speaking, the markets were down a little over seventeen percent. Um, here again, value outperformed, so we saw that reversal continue here for the second quarter row, value outperforming growth. So seeing that change in leadership, but both at the U.S. and outside the U.S. And then fixed income on the next page, again, rate hikes, obviously going to have a negative impact on returns here. So the Barclays aggregate index down about five, almost five percent, four point seven for the quarter and, and down negatively for the year as well. Uh, this is the first six-month return in history that we've seen for the Barclays Ag. So unprecedented, uh, underperformance within the fixed income space. Uh, more specifically, treasuries were the best performing. So that flight to quality, treasuries outperformed all other areas of the market. So we call those spread sectors. So they get credit, uh, credit, investment grade and high-yield, mortgage asset-backed, underperformed treasury. So that's another thing that we're going to talk about when we look at the active managers. A little bit of a Debbie Downer today, so I apologize for that. Uh, here we are. Let's get over to the next page. We don't have as much global fixed income. We'll look at the asset balances on the next page, please. There we are. So this just shows the change in value again. Shouldn't be surprising. We did see a decline in participant assets, right, with all of the asset classes negative. We did see negative returns. Um, our friends at a power talked about flows. It was not, as they noted, it was not due to their transition from potential to power. Those are due to market underperformance. All right. So we'll get into performance on the next page. I'm going to start with a high-level overview. So this is what participants see. These are the, the high-level participant level options. So on the top half of the page are passive and kept in shape for your, that, that the way the plan is structured from an investment venue, there's an active and a passive mirror. So participants can make a choice between lower-cost passive exposure or they can choose to pay a little bit more for the opportunity to outperform with active. So for each major asset class, they have the opportunity to choose between both.
Okay, thank you.
So for the passive options, uh, you'll see a lot of red. Again, not surprising, that's where the, the indices were. Uh, so over long periods of time on the right-hand side, good absolute returns, less good returns over the quarter and the year. But importantly, the passive managers are act, are closely tracking the benchmark. So that's their job, is low-tracking error, replicate the index, keep that fee low. Uh, so good report card for the passive managers, what they should be doing. But then the active management space, again, I mentioned that reversal of trends. So some of these options that had done really well for the event last year are lagging on a relative basis. Stable value continues to do well. The restructured mid-cap continues to do well. So more specifically, fixed income has been pretty consistently ahead of its benchmark, Barclays Ag, quarter after quarter, year over year. This last six months. Barclays ag, quarter after quarter, year over year, this last six months being an exception. As I mentioned, treasuries outperformed, most active fixed income managers are underweight, treasuries have more credit and other exposure with that effort to outperform. So that did for them in the short run. Long-term performance is still good, at top quartile performance over longer term periods. Large cap core had been a strong outperformer relative to its benchmarks. That has changed over the last two quarters, thank you Mr. Treasor, over the last two quarters, we'll talk a little bit about that with that reversal. Similarly, for international, the manager that had been doing really well at the growth side has fallen back. So that's the overall international performance, but long-term again above median, over long periods of time, a little bit of a headwind in the short period. And then the small midcap fund, if you recall in 2020, we revisited the structure of that underlying option and neutralized the style exposure, reconfigured, getting that equal weight between growth and value and solidifying that core exposure. So that has actually performed quite well. All of the underlying managers have held up. So that small midcap has helped preserve capital relative to its benchmark. The long-term performance is good on an absolute and relative basis. Short-term performance has been much more challenged on both an absolute and in some cases relative basis too. We're just a ray of sunshine today. So that'll turn it over to Weston to walk through a couple of highlights of what's driving that performance within those options and the stable back.
And maybe just before we talk about performance directly, I may jump to page 12 of our report and I believe it's 127 of. But this is, what we're looking at here is how Callan views a watch list, if you will, or, you know, we call them our stoplight pages. And it's just a very concise summary of not just performance, but what are the broader things that impact performance? So namely, the organization, the people, the process, the philosophy, what do we think about the product? Would it, and so, you know, we put all these together and then come up with kind of an overall status for all of your individual managers. And just to keep within that theme of hitting, you know, the highlights and the lowlights here, just moving down from large cap value, there's not a whole lot that we are permanently concerned about from large cap value managers. You get a large cap growth, it's maybe a little bit of a different story. And we'll talk more specifically about Loomis sales and their performance in just one moment. But really, the one that stands out here is Sands Capital. And what I, what we would like to point out to you all is that this overall status here, from our point of view, it did change during the quarter. And it's not so much that we did not expect Sands to underperform in this environment. We did. However, the severity and the magnitude of the underperformance is what really, you know, we, to be very clear, we're not changing our view on Sands. It is, they go through these periods. And typically, when they go through these periods, they come out of them very strong. However, in this case, it is, we're, you know, highlighting caution because they have a period of time where they need to show improvement. And to the extent they don't show that improvement, next comes watch list here on, you know, the North Carolina SRP kind of standard watch list. So we're, we're not recommending you all put them on watch today, but what we are saying is that, you know, unless we see that trend turn around and, you know, their, their, you know, style return to favor, if you will, then we're, we'll come in here with a little bit more, with, with additional action, if I should say.
Question. This is Malaven. Sands has gone through people change, especially with the passing away of their Frank Sands Senior, the original founder. Are you seeing their vision change, their sense of confidence there? Okay.
No. What Frank Sands Senior had really stepped back for some time, that was, that was probably the less concerning. What we pointed out here, that is a little bit more notable, is they have four portfolio managers and these, these four worked together for some time. Really, all of them are tenured, credible managers. But there is one who had to step away on medical. You know, while we didn't discuss that specific medical condition, Sands thinks that it's about a six month leave. And this comes at a bad time for Sands. So we don't think there's any difference in the vision or in the style in which they manage the portfolio that has remained very consistent. They buy innovative companies, they typically are very high growth companies and they've been very successful doing that over time. What, if you talk to them and what they're reflecting on now is, you know, maybe we should have paid a little bit more attention to, you know, the valuation of some of these companies that, that we were buying. If there was, if their lesson learned, what they, what they say that, you know, in hindsight, they, they know that they are, they are pretty clear that they're not macro thinkers, if you will, or they, they don't position the portfolio based on what they think the, at the economy's going to be. But given the severity of interest rate increases, severity of inflation, very few saw it going as far as it has. And Sands was not immune to that. And so that, that has really caused, you know, a pullback in the valuation of stocks now. They've, they've gone through and re-underwritten a lot of the things in the portfolio and they've placed them into kind of these, they've bucketed them into four categories of, you know, is, is this one that we think can do even better during, you know, this post pandemic environment? Or has the, you know, the framework changed for these companies? Really, what they, they haven't made a whole lot of changes, they've made some to where, you know, they, they believe that the outlook for some of these high growth companies have changed, that it may require more investment or it may, and ultimately that, that profit that was going to come in, you know, four or five years' name and now maybe 10 years and that, you know, they've got better opportunities, I think. So they've re-underwritten a lot of the things in the portfolio and they, they, they truly believe that this is one of the best times, you know, for new investors in the portfolio. So I hope I answered your question.
Okay. How long do we need to be cautious from your perspective? I mean, you, you place this under the cautionary status, how much time are y'all giving them?
That hard to say because I would say, just going back on what I said earlier, if you, if you look at Sands' long-term performance, and I think, you know, somebody knew coming on, wow, five years, seven years under the index, that's not how it's happened with Sands. It has been since November of 2020, so really eight months of just really getting hit hard with, with the market has given them. That has been, you know, the entirety of their underperformance. You look over pre-November 2021, Sands has had an amazingly consistent track record, which was, you know, hard for growth managers because if you didn't know an app, you didn't know Microsoft, typically you were underperforming. Sands was able to overcome that environment, still outperforming. So, you know, I, I'm not, I don't think we can give a proper timeframe for how much longer. I, I do want to be clear though, that we're expecting, you know, that turnaround to come, you know, in the next six to nine months. So it's not going to happen all in one quarter, it's not going to happen all in one month, but ultimately, we need to see the trend turn around and come in the right direction. If they continue, you know, another two, three quarters with, you know, throwing on, you know, really bad relative results, you know, I, I think we'll be forced to, to take some further action.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm just, okay, so a blue dot is, that's more notable. So it's a red, we're saying red, but not saying red.
No. We didn't use red, we didn't use red.
Okay, so I'm comparing Sands with Loomis and I see they have, you know, two blues and two yellows. Well, let's not do the overall, but there's two blues and one yellow versus two yellows and one blue for Loomis. So you have, Loomis is satisfactory, but you have caution for Sands. Is that because most of the, because of the people part or what is the difference here?
Yeah, the, the difference is the severity of their performance.
Of the performance.
Yes, and so that, that's one. And then also two, the notable changes in Mike Schrammick stepping away for, he's one of the four key portfolio managers. So he stepped away. For Loomis, it's a little bit different in that why we have them marked blue here for the product dynamics is they run a 35 stock portfolio and they had grown assets to, you know, they, they'd closed, which is, you know, not heard of, but they had closed the strategy in large cap to new entrants, basically because, so that was one of the things where we said, hey, it's not something that we're really terribly worried about, but just pay attention to it.
Okay.
So that's, if you're, if you're thinking about the severity, it goes green, then blue, then yellow, then red.
Okay. And so blue is better than yellow?
Blue is better than.
Yeah, and that thought, I realized, is teeny tiny. So basically, blue technically says notable.
At the bottom, yeah.
Yes, it's notable status, noteworthy, no concern. Effectively, that means it's something that's important and we need to be aware of it, but it doesn't give us any concern and we're not going to run into any action because of it. But it is important and you need to know about it, but it's not concerning. We did make it up. Because if we made it red, it seems like, oh, you know, red, red implies you need to take action.
Right.
So we wanted a different color that says it's important, but you don't need to take action.
I got you. I was just, I was looking and saying that they have, yeah, Loomis has two yellows to Sands one yellow, and yet one is satisfactory and the other is cautionary, but I assume is the mix for which you identify.
It's a little bit, the overall, there's a little bit more qualitative, it's the art of bringing together the science of the individual components to say, okay, looking at this holistically, what is our overall assessment? What's the level? So it's not, it's not a simple counting of the colors.
It's not linear.
It's not, this number of yellows makes you this, it's, it's okay, in line with expectations. What do we know about this strategy? We've known all these managers for years. What do we expect in different market environments from the team, from the people? Is it happening the way we expect? And if it's not, well, then it starts to get yellow. And if it's something that we're really concerned and we feel like it's a non-starter, we will use red.
And does Sands have a good succession plan or do you know?
They, they do. So they, they have been transitioning that ownership. Frank Sands had, you know, helped. And this is one where, you know, I'll have to come back and give you all some more details, but Frank Sands Senior had really fully transitioned out of it as far as, you know, I'm aware and on down to Frank Sands Junior as well as the portfolio management team, so.
And the team approach, I think, is what keeps it from being red. So the individual that's out on that, I believe, had this been a sole portfolio manager, this would have gone red quickly.
Got you.
Immediately had a conversation before this board meeting and been working on that. But because there's that team approach, we do feel that they can absorb responsibility. We're going to watch it closely. It does give us a little bit of concern, so we're going to keep a close eye on it. But I think that's that distinction between actionable versus not, is there is a strong team in place, it's not just that one individual. And as Weston said, Frank Sands Senior has, has really not been in the day-to-day for several years.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that help clarify?
Yeah, we understand it does better.
Our watch list is a little bit of a little nuanced and it gives you a little bit of that inside into the sausage we've been eating.
I'm still going back to four, page four, where we, where the performance is listed again, like everybody else, being down 42% versus benchmark being down 20%. I mean, you gotta work hard to be down twice as much as them, but this has been a bonkers situation for large cap growth, so I can understand how it. I'm assuming that they were still sticking to their mandate of large cap. I mean, they were innovative companies, but you're not talking about small cap companies where they went outside of their lane. Where are we?
Well, so for Sands, they, this has become such a dislocated market in that you have five names that are running the entirety of the market just about. And so if you look at large cap, well, if you look at all cap growth, that has a higher market cap than does large cap value. So you think, you know, large, mid, small, that market, that benchmark segment is bigger than is large, just the large cap on the value side. So it has become, now Sands has continued to buy what has historically been deemed a, you know, large and midcap company, as is their mandate. They have favored some more of the midcap stocks. They aren't going to buy, you know, micro cap or anything like that. But relative to how the market has moved, Sands, Sands has stayed here. It's the market that's moved up. So I do want to.
So they're just not sitting in Apple and Amazon and.
That is correct.
Facebook, Netflix, Google, the big five.
They do have some of those, but really it's the Apple and the Microsoft that I want to say that they.
Which is frankly, probably a good thing that they didn't jump on that bandwagon. So in terms of, never mind on that one, I guess. Yeah, I mean, we've beaten that, that horse. But my other question or concern or observation, I don't know what you want to call it, is that, I don't know, after 35 or 40 years of seeing this, my observation is that frequently, right when the approach you are taking becomes the most painful and everybody is beating you about the head and shoulders about and saying, why did you ever do this? That is the time to stick to your guns. Changing horses in the middle of the stream when everything just blew up is not necessarily the thing to do, gritting your teeth and moving forward with what you were doing sometimes is the, I don't know. Doubling down, doubling down takes guts. Yeah, and it, and it can be really stupid for, you know, the right thing to do and it's hard to know which one you're sitting in. So what is your observation of the fact that they are now changing some of their approach or looking at, because again, right when you are in the most painful position you can be in, usually is when most of what you bought is, you know.
I think they're changing their approach. And that's, you kind of coming back to that art within the science. So when we, Sands, what we're looking for is that balance of did you learn from this? Are you paying attention? Are you seeing what's happening? Are you being reflective and examining and taking the opportunity to learn from the underperformance? We want to see that. We don't want to see a panic of, uh-oh, we had a performance, we got to get that back real quick, we need to do something different in, in that scramble. We want that delicate balance in the middle where they're learning and taking the opportunity to continue to evolve the strategies. The market evolves, but without changing their stripes. We don't see them changing their stripes. So if they, if we had, and we've known these folks for years, that's why we meet with them regularly, a little over soon, but we can still read them well enough to see, are they going into reactionary mode? And we have not seen that.
And really, throughout their history, they have found more of those growth opportunities below the mega cap space than, you know, than most growth managers. And I would, I would argue if anything, they are, they are doubling down on that philosophy of, you know, the innovative growth company and, you know, really sticking with that theme and, and as they have throughout the history. And I, you know, in some ways, I would agree with them. You look at, you know, what is it, Apple trading, trading at, you know, 30 plus times earnings. In order for Apple to grow at 20% per year, they have to basically create a company the size of Nike every single quarter. That is, so it is just astounding as to how much, you know, kind of anticipated growth there is in such a large company. And they, they look at that and say, you know, we don't want that. We want something, you know, like a ServiceNow or, you know, a cloud computing company or, you know, something that we know the growth is going to be there. We see the runway. They want, they do pay a little bit less attention to valuation than most, but they want to see a more rational value, not a cheap valuation, but a more rational.
Question.
So then I'll, I'll jump to the next page, page 13. The, the manager that has been on the tightest leash, I would say here is Wedge. This is one that you all have had on the watch list for some time. They are showing some performance improvement. You would see that. With Callan, we were, you know, regularly in communication with Wedge and, you know, reporting that back to staff. And really, you know, is, as far as we're concerned, you know, we still think it is prudent for you all to hold Wedge. Elizabeth mentioned at the top line level, which is most important for us. The performance of the overall smid cap option has done any better than Wedge as a department. So, you know, when you look at Wedge, it, the long-term performance is, is underwhelming. It's, it's, but it's not one that you look at in the same light as like Sands and say, whoa, that's awful. It is just, you know, kind of, they've gone through some struggles over the past three years. They seem to be turning that around. They put in some more, you know, risk management, a little bit more risk management, but at least the quality of the portfolio that's yet to bear fruit. But it is starting to show some signs of improvement. So we, we do, we do think it is reasonable and, and, you know, our recommendation is to just continue and, and move it. To the extent that there is greater concern, we will be prepared to act with staff very quickly should a change need to be made there. All right.
Ask a question?
Please.
This, this is Steve Beam. And maybe this is something Weston, you and Elizabeth look at and come back the next quarter. Back to the Sands question. I had looked at this a little earlier and knowing exactly the portfolio, but looking at one of their comparable growth portfolios that it looks, you know, almost like they own a lot of the, the Kathy Wood type investments that have just, you know, imploded with the innovation just situation the last year. And my question, you talk about are they doubling down or not? But for those of us that lived through the 2000 internet debacle, it took 10 years or more to get back to some of those things when you ignored evaluation levels. And I just think we need to look at that and determine if that's a similar situation or not. If they're, if they've abandoned their valuation metrics, that could be a real problem going forward. That's just a comment or, and a question.
You, you bring up a really good point. Really, there are two reasons for underperformance. Number one, you've got a good company, trades at a higher valuation. They, they, you know, the market rethinks that valuation as interest rates increase, right? But the company is still growing at a rate that Sands had, or, you know, growth managers had thought it would grow at. To me, that's, that, that's a very forgivable sin. We don't know how market sentiment is going to change, but we are, have hired them to identify companies growing faster than the market. So that, that's one situation. It's another situation if they buy a, you know, high-priced, high valuation company and that earnings power that they thought was going to be there just never materializes. And that, we have actually been, you know, communicating with Sands like, hey, it would be great to, to, you know, have a view of this. Now, they have put together some, you know, some metrics that suggest that, hey, the earnings per share growth of these companies is intact. That has not changed. But what has changed is the valuation multiple of, you know, these companies. And they, they brought out a, one of their e-commerce companies where, you know, all right, this is what the valuation should have changed based on what interest rates did. And instead of it being down 30%, like it would suggest from just an interest rate move, it's now down 70%. But the growth trajectory, the, the top line and the, and the profit growth and the earnings per share growth has not changed at all. So, you know, they, again, they, they believe that that represents a great opportunity. If, if your company is still growing and, and all that's changed is the, kind of the market valuation of, or the sentiment of that company, then, you know, their signal is to buy more. So, you know, I, I do think that, that you brought up a great point, Steve, and that is something that we can come back and, and maybe give some more examples of, you know, is it that the company has changed? Or is it that the sentiment around those companies or that portfolio has changed?
If it's not proprietary, I would love to know at the next meetings, yeah, some specific stocks, did they double down or not? Not because I would be second guessing what they did to those companies. I have no idea. Somebody told me the other day, it was a great line, you don't have to make the money back the same way you lost it. It doesn't mean you have to buy the same stock. It might mean you sell that one and buy another one in the industry that you feel, you know, will do better. But I would be, or, or maybe I'd just be personally interested. I don't know, but through the board, I would find that to be pretty fascinating. What, what are they doing in terms of the number, the number? If you want to, if it's proprietary, what they're buying, just how many of them are they doubling down on? And how many of them are they replacing with something specific that they feel like will do?
Yes, and as I mentioned, they've gone through the portfolio and really tried to bucket them. So I'm sure they would be willing to share, all right, how we bucket, you know, how has this changed? And what sort of, you know, where have we made sales? And, and where have we made additional purchases? Absolutely. So, um, so we've, we've talked quite a bit about Sands and I can jump back to performance, but I, I thought that just in the interest of time, we would move forward to stable value. Is there, are there any questions on performance? We'll jump forward to the next agenda item then, which is the stable value review. And just as a, some background here, as Elizabeth, as Elizabeth mentioned, we put this together annually for you all. This is your, one of your largest active exposure portfolio other than the large cap passive. This is the second largest option that is available for participants. So you will pay a little bit more attention to it. Here quarterly from Galliard, and here annually from us as it relates to, all right, how does Galliard look versus the broader peer group, you know, versus their peers? And as, as Paul mentioned, the purpose of this portfolio is really capital preservation. So just maybe jumping to page four, I'll, I'll give you all the broader executive summary then we'll just go through and hit a couple of things that you all might find interesting throughout the report. But number one, well, we talked about red lights and yellow lights. Galliard is the only manager that you've had in the portfolio in our tenure that has triggered the red light, which, you know, and a lot of that came from changes that they were making in 2019, organizational changes, just a lot going on that we wanted to make sure that there was not, you know, a massive flow of money.
People.
And people. And so, you know, I think the good news here, if we were to end on some good news, is just actually we, talent is feeling you all have moved past it. We're comfortable with Galliard and such to the degree that ultimately we recommend we'll remove them from your, or official watch list. So that, that I think is, is the, kind of the big news from this as, as well as, you know, maybe a, a positive development for you all. This red light was never triggered by performance. Performance has remained solid throughout relative to stable value peers. But what we're looking at now for, for Galliard ultimately is the change in ownership. They were spun off from Wells Fargo Asset Management and bought by two private equity firms, GTCR and Reverence Capital. What we would like to see is what we have seen so far, which is Galliard remains largely autonomous from, you know, these two private equity organizations. To the extent that, you know, private equity doesn't understand that this is, you know, probably a lower margin segment of, you know, asset management and just not meant to grow and shoot the lights out, then, you know, we're all comfortable. But to the extent they start inserting, you know, growth targets and things that are unreachable, then we'll, then, you know, I think our, our degree of caution will go up. Yes. What are the strategies of the two private equity firms that bought Galliard? So I, I believe these are two firms that have some experience buying asset management firms. So this is, you know, I, I think it's, it wasn't just Galliard. It was really the entirety of the all spring platform, if you will. So I, I think their, their strategy is, is they, they saw an asset owner, if you will, in Wells Fargo Asset Management that wanted to get out of the business. And so they offered them a price and, and they took it. And so I think the strategy ultimately is to, you know, as you think with any private equity firm is ultimately to get it, you know, stabilize revenues and, you know, to some degree grow them and ultimately spin it off. Now that said, there are a lot of private equity firms that have owned asset managers for well over the seven, the, you know, 10-year timeframe, you know, of private equity. So, you know, I, I think ultimately they'd like to see it as a stable asset in their portfolio. Something that they're expecting a ton of growth out of.
Thank you.
All right, and then here just finishing up on page four as to what, you know, what really triggered this red light. Galliard did have an elevated level of turnover in 2019 with a lot of the, with a couple of the founders retiring. Since then, they have remained relatively stable as an organization and really with their people. And, and, you know, they, they continue to have a, a strong bench and a credible kind of team oriented process. So we, we are comfortable with, with Galliard as a manager. So I mentioned I would, I would touch on a couple of things. We'll jump to page eight and just, some of this is, is what you've already seen a little bit from Paul, but it will, you know, maybe just expand upon, well, how does this compare versus the broader peer group? On page eight, there's a chart on the right that shows the triple B exposure. So I mentioned capital preservation is the purpose of this portfolio. To the extent their, you know, portfolio shows a, a much larger amount of the lowest quality and investment grade, it'll be a little bit of a concern. I think the takeaway here is that Galliard is in line with peers. This triple B exposure is held steady over time, whereas you've seen it tick up for the peer group, the median of the peer group, which is in the, kind of the grayish area. Galliard is held steady at, you know, around 50% or below over time of, of the overall portfolio. As you look on the bottom there, we show effective duration. This is another metric of risk taken in the portfolio. As Paul mentioned, duration is ticking up for all shorter duration bond managers. So Galliard is included. They are just slightly longer than the peer median right now, but certainly within the acceptable range. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with them needing, having some additional flexibility, whereas some of these broader, you know, more co-mingled, stable value accounts don't have that same flexibility. Galliard does here. Moving, moving to page nine. We'll just talk about the crediting rate and market book. And again, these are the same metrics, metrics Paul showed you. I, I think the takeaway is that crediting rate is in line with peers and that crediting rate has been, has been pretty consistently above the median of the peer group. So whereas it's right around the median right now, over time that has been slightly above. And then it, the market to book ratio just below, all market books. Rate, all market to book values, I guess, are, are below one right now. That ratio is all below one for all the managers. And you see that much tighter range that has compressed here for the managers. Galliard is arguably on the higher end of that market book range, which, you know, underscores that, that quality of the portfolio. Page 11, I'll just mention that we, we see a lot of different stable value managers. Galliard is, is one that blends both their own underlying fixed income expertise with the use of external managers. So some firms will do entire, their entire book is managed outside of, kind of their, or predominantly managed outside of their own fixed income. And some stable value managers, you know, Eero Bryce is another one. They manage the entirety of that, of those fixed income underlying assets themselves. So this is one that blends both and I just wanted you all to be aware of that. I will not touch on page 12. I will jump to page 13. I do think the treasurer would have liked this one, but, you know, as you're looking at the management fee comparison versus peers, a very competitive fee of 5.3 basis points. And there, there is some dispersion in that peer group of, you know, what the ultimate kind of management fee is for both the management of those bond portfolios as well as the management of the external portfolio. On page right, on page 13 to the right, we show the wrap fees. While it looks like a wide range, if you look below that 25th percentile is 15 basis points, as is the fifth, as is the 75th percentile. So it's a very tight range. What we would say here is that likely the wrap fees, they've come down from what they were during the global financial crisis. This is the fees that ultimately the insurers charge to insure these, these accounts. And these have come down, likely hit a floor, whereas they were half of what they were during global financial crisis, but, you know, they're probably not going to move a whole lot, right? And then just a couple of very quick comments on page 15 about a stable value market environment. I mentioned market to book ratios are, have dropped down significantly. One of the positives here is that crediting rates, just given the, the abrupt and really large moves in interest rates here and both Fed funds rate as well as, you know, the 10-year, really the movement across the shorter end of the curve, that has caused crediting rates to tick up. Whereas, you know, the stable value is still outpacing kind of its money market fund, equivalent, if you will. So we are seeing it tick up in crediting rates and that's ultimately what comes back to the participants. So that, that is good news. While it is still in that, you know, just off the bottoms, I guess, if you will, still around 2%. The hope is that ultimately this will rise up to three, four. Maybe we'll go, get back to that more normal environment that you spoke of earlier, of, you know, five and 6%. But that, that is one of the positive trends. And then I mentioned the, the rapid casy and the fees have come down and ultimately bottomed. With that, I'm going to pause for any questions and wrap up my comments.
Any other questions?
This is Steve McKeem.
Yeah. The recommendation that we remove Galliard from the watch list?
We do, yes, we are making that recommendation.
We'll have to have a motion. But we, will we be doing that today? Can, if the board would like to do that, we can do that today. Okay, well, we have a, let's, we have one question from Steve Beam, I believe. Is that you, Steve?
Yes, let me ask one question for Weston or even Paul, if he's on there. At the plan level, I know that you obviously cannot have a, a major liquidation without a market adjustment. But has anyone thought? market adjustment, but has anyone thought or looked at if for any reason there was a significant withdrawal from participants moving money out of this with the, the latest market, with the value being at 95%? What would it, is there a likelihood that that could happen and cause any problems with, with the portfolio? Is that, you know, if anyone?
So at participant level, you know, may, sure, I'd be happy to jump in. Yeah, if there is a participant move out of stable value, that would affect, you know, the market book, lowering it a little bit because there's less, less assets, less participants to, to absorb that loss. However, you know, it's, it's pretty unlikely in a market environment that we're seeing with consistent negative returns on a market value basis in fixed income and equities, regardless of its domestic or international, that we would see participants move that way. You know, in, even in the boom years of the, of the, you know, the equity markets and whatnot, there's always been a pretty consistent, especially with North Carolina, pretty consistent participant allocation to stable value, which is even a little bit higher than normal. So I think stable value for North Carolina participants has been, you know, a welcomed and a wanted asset class. So I, I wouldn't foresee any big moves out of it from a participant aspect. And I would say the other big end to participant-driven flows is what you have with Goalmaker. Goalmaker utilizes stable values, to the extent that participants remain in that, in those model portfolios, if you will, that, you know, that's going to, you know, really dampen any flows out of or, or action. And a good number of your participants utilize Goalmaker, so, you know, you should expect some stability to come from that as well.
I would not like to call for this question, I'd like to put it on our fourth quarter board meeting, and the reason is only because there are so many unknown external factors that's going to be happening between now and then with Ukrainian war, with the midterm elections, with, there's lots and lots and lots of unknowns that I would feel a whole lot easier voting on this at our last meeting in December, into November. I'd like to put it on the agenda, if that is okay with the rest of the board. And it would give an opportunity to absorb a whole lot more of this rather than being hit with it right now. You came in at an interesting time.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all. Thanks, Weston and Elizabeth. Next on our agenda, item number 12, we got Chris Morris.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. It's good to, to meet a lot of you first, for the first time. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Chris Morris, I'm one of the co-chief investment officers for the Investments Division. I will be hitting on two agenda items today, I will try to make them brief given the time. The first one is the compliance report that I handle quarterly, so this is for the second quarter of, of the year. Fortunately, there's, there's nothing material to report in terms of compliance with regards to our investment policies and prohibited. Just to set the stage, we have certain statutory restrictions around needing to divest in, in certain, certain securities related to Iran and boycott Israel. So we have a process that we go through to develop those lists and ensure that we do not hold those securities, both on the defined contribution plan as well as the defined benefit, the pension plan side. So we have formal policies that go through, we have a constant monitoring to make sure that our managers do not purchase these securities or do not hold these securities. For the second quarter and for the foreseeable past, none of our managers have, have had any of those securities. If they were, they would pop on our daily compliance guideline and they would immediately have to sell them and reimburse us if there's any losses. But fortunately, we have a good process in place, the managers have a good process in place to manage this and it's typically not an issue. In terms of the executive order for the Chinese military companies, we continue to monitor that as well. This is related to presidential executive order that was instituted a couple of years ago now. Again, we continue to monitor this daily in our, in communication with our managers and none of our managers hold any of these, these companies as well. And then just on a day-to-day basis, we, we monitor the investment guidelines of every one of our portfolios to ensure that they are, you know, meeting our expectations and what they agree to within their contract. So we set investment guidelines specifically in each contract for our investment manager, giving them guidelines as to, and ranges as to how they should invest based on their investment strategy and what we hired them to do. So we have these guidelines, we monitor it. If they go outside these guidelines, typically it's, it's a conversation with them, making sure that they're continuing their strategy and, and doing what essentially we hired them to do. So it's something we, we monitor constantly. Again, things pop occasionally, typically they're pretty binary things. Sometimes it requires a conversation with the manager to make sure we understand what's going on, but nothing material typically comes out of it. And we had, we didn't have any issues in the, in the second quarter. So no questions on that, I will move to the last agenda item. And again, I'll make this, I'll make this very brief as well, given this is the performance review of the 403B program and even the fact that, you know, this is a dissolution and we'll likely be exiting all of these in the next few months, I'll just kind of talk at a high level about kind of where we're at. See, I won't go manager by manager as I've done in the past unless the board would like me to, but given the fact that we'll be exiting these anyways, it's, I'll keep it brief. So looking at, if you just want to put slide three up, the next slide please, that, this just shows kind of the asset allocation as of June 30. Total portfolio held about 25 million in assets split between passive and active, about 13.4 million in passive and just under 12 in active. Terms of performance, the, you know, it was, it was a tough quarter, as you heard from, from a number of folks, very tough for the global financial markets, both equities and bonds got hit very hard. So these funds that we were in weren't immune to that. The, every portfolio had negative returns, the best performing portfolio was the, the total return bond fund, but that still had a negative 5.7% return. In terms of relative performance, you know, four out of the six active managers struggled for, for the quarter with underperforming the benchmark, the, the largest one was, was Tiro Price, they, they continued to struggle, as I've talked about in the past couple of quarters, that, that's a manager that has really struggled over the recent past and would require, you know, some action if we weren't solving the entire program anyways. So they, they had a tough time, they continue to have a tough time in the longer term, but the Real Assets Fund outperformed their, their benchmark for the quarter, the DFA CUS small cap outperformed their benchmark for the quarter, the other four underperformed, although all pretty slightly, with the exception of the Tiro Price, the ship roof fund. Longer-term performance for, for most of the funds continued to be pretty strong with three and five year up performance for, for all of the managers except for Tiro Price and Bailey Duffer, which has had a pretty rough go of it in the recent, the recent past. But I'll leave it at that unless, unless folks want me to go into any details on this, but I'll open the floor for any questions, if anyone has any.
Questions for Chris? Great. All right. Thanks. I don't think we have any public comment that we're aware of, so no public comment. Any other comments from the board members in the room or on the phone, virtually?
Yeah, this is Steve Beam one last time. Oh, I just want to thank Patty for getting our technology back up, the four of us that were in timeout the first 15 minutes. And for all of you in Raleigh, sadly, you missed the philosophical dissertation by Jim Lundston on existentialism.
Oh, God.
So, sorry.
Thank the Lord. Well, I'll just say this, this is Jim Lundston here, the treasurer, anything you could do to get a contribution from the state to the 401K plan or any of the other plans, I think would be the single most beneficial thing that could happen to, to the, to the population that is, that we're aimed at, that could happen. I think it's one of the strongest things, moves the state could make and one of the ones that would actually have an impact. So I hope you're successful in that regard.
Treasurer had to leave, but we'll relay that to him.
You do.
Right. Well, thank you. The date of our next board meeting is December 1st. Again, while I apologize for the technical difficulties and Patty's out, we have Lisa try to step in and, and so we were able to figure that out, so apologize for that. Again, you know, the treasurer asked if we would adjourn the meeting in memory of Deputy Fishman of Wayne County and Deputy Byrd of Wake County, so do I have a motion from one of the board members to adjourn them in their memory?
Second. I'll make the motion.
Who did the motion?
Well, I was the third one, but you can take Lundston.
I'll second Beam.
We couldn't hear you, sorry. I think that was, I think that was James Lundston with the motion. And who had a second?
Beam, I'll do it.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Take the roll.
All right. Tom Causey on behalf of Treasurer Paul will.
Aye.
Shabella Thomas.
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson.
Aye.
Linda Baron.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
And Wendy Hibler.
Aye.
All right, thanks everyone. Maybe adjourn.
Thank you.